All this planning board meeting to order in virtual time. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, John.
Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. In the January meeting.
Motion.
Any corrections or additions? Offer a motion again to approve the minutes.
Yes, I can say that.
Is that you, David? Need a second, please. Have me second.
Hey, John, can you hear me now?
Is that Fred?
Yeah, I'm doing it two ways. I've got, I've got the audio, um, the voice on the phone and I can see on the, on the, uh,
Alright. There Fred, uh, caller one. Brad.
Yeah. Put the label with it there.
Okay. So I need a second. Kevin or Fred, can I get a second? Kevin or Fred?
Hi.
Kevin has seconded.
Kevin.
Kevin has seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, there's a terrible delay.
It's okay, not a problem. Any discussion? Any corrections? Offer the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Brad?
No, I'm fine with the minutes, that's what you're asking.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, Carrie. Zach?
Alright.
Excellent.
Okay, so I'll do, now I'm gonna go ahead and use everybody's, and I'll protect them, and when I get done presenting the text amendment, then I'll,
Turn up Zach.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start it up. I'm also gonna share the screen. You'll be able to see what I'm reading through.
Carrie.
Alright, can you hear, uh, unmute?
Hey, there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, Heather said I was breaking up at the chat box, wanna make sure y'all could hear it.
Yeah, you're coming.
What's up?
Go ahead.
Okay, get started. Alright, so we'll go ahead to the first item is the text amendment to the landing section of the table for pieces and parking to the park. And it would be amended as follows. Modify the following permitted use in the D20 personal zoning district. And it freed veterinary offices and may be struck the section that's without interior or exterior boarding facilities and without outdoor pens or runs at the wording and their associated ancillary. And then with the top, a parking category of C which space for each 600 square feet.
I'm sorry, but I got none of that back. It was too broken up.
Can I hear a question, Zach?
Yeah, we're getting, did you get all that?
Hey, Zach.
Yeah.
I, I got none of what you just said. It was all broken up. I'm gonna throw them.
Okay, can you see what's on the, uh, on the screen?
I cannot. All I, um, no.
It's on the backside of one of your agendas, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm reading through it now. I'm just, I didn't hear anything you said. I've got all the paperwork in front of me. I couldn't hear any of that. I don't think anybody else could if it was all clear, but.
It was pretty broken up. I had to turn up my volume.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, I read through what the text amendment says. It would be the first item in your agenda. Um, that's, that's just what we're going through right now, which is amending the veterinary offices to strike the language about interior and exterior boarding facilities. And adding in, and their associated ancillary uses. And then also adding in a parking category of D1 space for each 600 square feet of gross store area.
Right, got it.
I'll entertain a motion.
I need to interrupt real quick.
Go ahead, Heather.
Hold on, Paxton just sent me an email. It says, what is going on? Has the meeting started? I was informed that I was put on hold until the meeting starts, Paxton.
Um, I just sent out a, I just sent out another link about a couple minutes ago. So if you could have her follow that link that that was, that was in that email, just to make sure that, uh, she's clicking on the right. I'm guessing she might, she might be clicking on the thing we did earlier today.
Can you just send it?
I have four minutes to say.
Yeah, just in case anybody has, doesn't have the right link before, I wanted to make sure we sent out another one. Um, which email was she using?
It looks like her Hotmail one. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Alrighty, business to hand. Next. Is that it? I'll entertain a motion. To the cabinet and see if the board of commissioners are still here in a second, but first. David, you gotta turn on your mic.
Did you get a, a motion?
I just, the motion to present this to the board of commissioners.
I'm sorry, was there a motion? Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing on, call the vote, all in favor for coming into the board of commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so Carrie. Alrighty, Zach. Commercial site plan.
Alright, we'll go on to the next item. If I could ask everybody, if possible, to try to mute your phones. Um, that'll knock out some of the background noise, hopefully. So while we're running through these items, if you could either press the mute button on your smartphone or the icon on the screen, um, and that should mute. That way there's not a lot of background noise and feedback. Um, I can mute on my end, but it seems to be unmuting after I mute everybody. So, um, I'll go ahead and switch every, so y'all can see, see my screen for the second item. Alright, can everybody, uh, see that? This is the commercial site plan.
Yes.
Everybody can see that. Um, John, what's your preference? Do you just wanna kinda scroll through this or ask questions, um, about the CSP?
Let's go to item by item. And if somebody has a question, whether it be Fred or Paxton or Kevin, we'll go back to Big Boy. We'll just chime in. Hopefully, everybody's on to. Okay, um, the application information, the applicant information hasn't changed for 30 years. So I'm getting with that. Zach?
Your P day, you're broken up there.
Alrighty. Let's go to the CSP. The application. Let's start at 156.23 building size.
Okay, do you wanna run through?
There you go, stop. Number one. Okay?
Running through the checklist. 156 dot 123 feet building size, yes. 56 dot, years are four. Height and density, yes. Sinage, 156 dot 04, determined.
To be determined, correct?
Uh, 154 dot 049 sidewalk regulations not applicable. 156 dot express, required screening and tougher zone, yes. 156 dot 06, off street park reference to appendix B, yes. 156 dot 124, commercial building and other permitted. This is for you to approve by site, fire hydrant located within three. Yes. Size permit, installation of students on hydrant, they have more than 1,000 feet, not applicable. New water line, eight inches and six hundred closed, not applicable. Tentative approval by charter exchange. Department of Environmental Health, NC Department of Environmental and Natural Resources, a proposed treatment of, not applicable. Tentative approval of any registered building required by law, not applicable. Inspection sites involving public rights play and off-site destruction. The over-quieted off-street park located in this, is right of way, not applicable for the item number five, uh, for the required off-street.
No. Nine circles, no, Zach.
Yeah, hold on, let me see if I can. I'm getting an echo back.
Sorry.
John, were you referencing the off-street parking?
Yeah, number six.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, that'd be check no for the, off-street park. A 156 dot 123, an access lane, yes. No backing out of parking in the street or right of way, yes.
I got a question, I got a question. That yes would happen or no, it's not gonna happen? Do you need to just correct that right now? John Freshwater?
We're, we're not gonna need to back out in the street.
Okay.
They have circled the inappropriate.
Okay. Okay. Make that correction. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, I was trying to see what that one.
No, he did, yeah. No big deal.
No provision. Maybe construed production of, for an off-street truck loading slash unloading space required, yes. No part of off-street truck loading slash unloading located in the right of way, yes. Truck loading slash unload space on property, yes. Installation of directional regulatory or advisory signs and pavement marking, yes. Any parking at road signs located off the existing right of way, yes. No part of right of way use for cost, or use to conduct private business, yes. Right of way improvement with NCDOT, our code of ordinances of the town of Cape Carteret. Yes. Evidence of all NCDOT and any other agency permits submitted, not applicable. Appropriate lighting provided, lighting plan, yes. Appropriate survey markers are shown and installed, yes. No sign device or marking erected on or overhanging any public street, road, right of way, no moving flashing. Give illusion of movement or resemble traffic control devices within 25 feet of street, road, or right of way, yes. Same copies, and must accompany this application, should be five. Uh, later than 15 days prior to the planned foremeeting, uh, yes, slash not applicable. Site plan submitted, CLD drawn at a scale one inch equals six foot back, one inch equals ten feet, yes. Site plan signed sealed by licensed professional or surveyor. Shall, shall include an added applicant owner entitled, a person preparing the site plan maps and the company data, yes. Fairship information, third eye holding LLC. If adjoining properties, yes. Our proposed development, Island Pet Veterinary Hospital. Data thirty-one. Crude, yes. Graphic representation of.
You gotta, you gotta pop any phones. Every other word we're getting.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
Sorry.
Let me try to. Try to put my headphones in and see if that changes it.
Or better.
Is that any better, John?
Yeah.
Can you hear me like this?
Much better, thank you, Zach.
I can hear you too.
Yeah.
Alrighty, um, go on to graphic representation of scale used, yes. Catch descended the map showing entire site development, yes. Zoning designation where property is located, yes. Zoning designation of abutting property, yes. Acreage of the site to the nearest tenth of an acre, yes. Boundary survey with courses and distances of each boundary segment are illustrated on the plan, yes. Courses and distances of each boundary segment of all streets and easements, right of ways, and all property abutting the subject property, yes. Nature of all existing and proposed streets, easements, and other rights of way, public or private, yes. Installation of fire hydrants indicated proposed.
But it is noted on the plan, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Ex, existing and proposed features information. Location saved, pavement and right of way width of all existing and proposed streets and all easement curves, curb cuts, bike trails, and sidewalks abutting the property. Are properties in question and within 200 feet, not applicable. Topographic contours at five-foot intervals and any physical conditions or features that have significant effect on the site, yes. Location of all existing slash proposed setbacks, dimensions, landscape areas, and fencing, yes. Location of proposed utilities slash facilities, including fire hydrants, fuel storage tanks, and showing connection to existing supply and disposal systems where applicable, yes. Location of all existing slash proposed signs, traffic control devices, lighting standards, and utility poles on or abutting property, yes. Flood zones, boundaries as determined by FEMA, not applicable. Location of areas subject to US Army Corps of Engineers 404 wetlands protection, not applicable. Delineation of any and all AECs as defined by KAMA, not applicable. All watercourses, wetlands, esterin waters within the site and within 600 feet in any direction from the property shown, none. Tight improvements included, location of existing and proposed principal buildings, yes. Location of all accessory buildings and structures, not applicable. Finish grade elevation at all corners, yes. Indication as to whether or not building will be retained or removed, not applicable. Proposed building type. Uh, check yes, number of fours and dimensions, yes. Finish grades for entire site, yes. Size and location of all water mains connections to existing water supply system, yes. Existing slash proposed sanitary sewage facilities serving the site, including location, size, slope of all sanitary sewer lines, pumping stations, connections to existing facilities, location of any proposed sewage treatment plants slash septic treatment facilities, yes. Storm drainage systems, including the following, all existing proposed storm sewer line within or adjacent to the site. Yes. Location of each catch basin inlet and manhole, yes. Location slash extent of any proposed dry well, none. Groundwater recharge basins, none. Retention and infiltration basins, yes. Other water conservation devices, none. And then for Deener, included the broke stream, altered, improved, relocated, or structure, or, or fill is proposed, not applicable. Let me zoom in a little more.
Yep, we got eight, nine, 10, 11.
Okay, when, when a broker stream is proposed for alteration, improvements, relocation, or when a structure or fill is proposed under, in, or along a stream, evidence of submission of an application for proposed work to NC Deener attached, not applicable. When ditches, streams, brooks, or watercourses are to be altered, improved, or relocated, the method of stabilizing slopes and measures to control erosion and sanitation, and filtration as well as typical ditch sections profile shown on the site plan, yes. Location, type, size of all existing and proposed curbs, curb cuts, sidewalks, driveways, fences, retaining walls, signs, parking space area, yes. Capulation of total number of dwelling units of each type in the project, and then that's, uh, not applicable. With that, complete the checklist and then I'll bring us down to the site plan. Which y'all should see on your screens now.
Anybody got any questions?
None.
Brad? Paxton? Okay, Kevin?
None.
None? Okay.
David, none here.
Alrighty. I don't see Paxton or Fred.
Fred left.
Fred left?
Yeah, I saw a prompt that said Fred Josie left the meeting, so I don't know if he was disconnected or what happened, but about 10 minutes ago, it just viewed on my screen. I don't know what screen you guys are looking at, but I see six boxes, and his was one that just said Fred left, so.
So it looks like it's you, me, David, and, uh...
Got David, Travis, John, you, and myself.
I'm just talking planning board members.
Wow.
We've only got three right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Now what, Zach?
Did Paxton get on?
I never saw Paxton's presence.
I don't think Paxton's here.
I had spoken to her earlier in the day, and she said she was gonna phone in.
I know, but she's not on the list of, uh, people that are in the meeting. It's just you, me, and Kevin right now.
Correct.
I did see a little flash going by there earlier. I'm not sure if somehow we could reach out to her.
We could, um, I could call her in on this, on my cellphone, and then merge for a call in. Uh, let me try to do that real quick and see. And then, uh, John, do you have Fred Josie's phone number?
Yeah, I'll call.
Heather.
He texted me and said he got kicked out.
Um, caller four left, who's caller?
Me, I've been here the whole time. I muted myself. It's Michelle.
And Michelle.
Hi, I just muted myself, but I've been listening to everything you said. I, like, it's broken, but I, I got the gist. I mean, I'm right here. I've been here the whole time.
We, we need a couple board members. Okay.
Your call has been.
Guys own.
Your call has been.
Guys own.
Did that happen to Joy and Matt?
Hello?
Fred? Yeah, what's doing?
I can't get in.
Alright, then just, okay. Okay. Zach, Zach, does this count?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I can hear him.
Alright, everybody here, Fred?
Yes.
I'm here. Can you hear me? I'm right here.
Okay.
My watch.
We've gone through the site plan. Just to make sure that we did it. You got any questions? On any of the five pages?
Uh, I want to know exactly how, I want to know two things.
Okay.
And you never heard me.
Alright, well anyhow.
Oh, no, I never got my questions answered.
Fred, I am allowing you the opportunity to ask your questions. If you would like to, okay? So what questions, what questions do you have for the CSP?
Uh, number, I want to even want to go back to the first one. Cause I wanna know how you pick up the 600 feet or the, uh, park, uh, or parking space.
Zach? Zach?
Hey, so I just got a call from Paxton. I'm gonna call her on her office line and merge her in.
Okay.
Hold on, just, uh, just a second.
John, I'm not a fan of 600s wrong. I just don't know whether there's too much. John, I'm not a fan of 600s wrong, I just don't know whether there's too much or not enough.
Well, let's, hey, let them get back to mine, you gotta get Paxson to hear.
Alright.
So, be patient with them. You're on speaker.
Yeah.
Chad Lightwood, my brother. We all, we all want to live too tonight, okay?
Alright, so Paxson should be with us now.
Paxson there?
I tried to hear the meeting, it was very difficult, lot of echoes and every other word type thing, but I, I only have a couple of questions if I, if it's time. Was yelling John, you couldn't hear me?
Well.
Asked about questions, are you ready for mine?
I, I got Fred, I think's gonna go in front of you. I got him on the line, so let Fred go first, and then he can, Paxson is out, okay?
Okay.
Alright, Fred? You wanna go back to the 600 square foot, can you give them a quick update on that, Zach, please?
I didn't hear the, uh, the question, so can you repeat what that is?
Fred?
You got 600 square feet in there? Yeah, I just wondered how you came up with that particular number, because I don't know whether it's enough or too much.
Yeah, I mean, so that was on, that was the first item in the agenda for the text amendment, um, where we changed that, but and I think, I think we already made a mo- motion on that item, um...
He just wants to know if you think it's enough or too little for the square footage, is his question. That's the question he's got, I know it's voted on, Zach, just, he wants to know where he got the 600.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just looked at, uh, associated businesses that have that same requirement and based it off of that, um, I think they've got more than that amount that are indicat- that's indicated for the parking lot, um, so if there's a concern over how many spaces, I would the applicant weigh in on that, whether they want to retain their current plan or if they're gonna reduce it based off of the parking requirement, um, that was just based off of, uh, other businesses that are located in the B20, and the parking demands for those.
You good with that, Fred?
I only got four, it's, you're, uh, two seconds.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm trying to play it through my computer, Fred, doing the best I can.
Yes.
Okay?
600 is okay, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Well, I can hear, I got a question answered, but, and you can vote no, but, alright, now you're on CSP, right?
Correct.
Let me go get all my questions, because there are still some things that they didn't come up with, that they may have answered, I'm just gonna pass. But I'll, I'll be back in just a second.
Okay. Paxson, in the meantime, you wanna ask your questions?
Yes, I want to know what provisions were made by Swain and the applicant to maintain Golf and Dolphin Drive.
I can't answer that, Zach?
Yeah, I mean, that's not something that is of bearing in the town's consideration of this, because it's a private road, um, but I'll...
Well, it certainly should be, because I'm certainly not gonna maintain a private road without everybody on that private road kicking in. That's the problem we're having with Hardee's and, uh, the PNC building and Walgreens, everybody...
Can I just say something, can anybody hear me? Hey, it's Michelle, can anybody hear me? Can I just say something?
I can.
With this road, Paxson, you're gonna get more public access, we're gonna main Golf and Dolphin Road, you're gonna have another road that's gonna, you know, it's gonna be highlighted, like, it's gonna be like a unit. You have no worries, you have no concerns, I promise you.
So, say that again, because what I'm concerned about is the maintenance of Golf and Dolphin Drive. When, when Swain bought the property, the shopping center and the extra property from my sisters and brother, we had an, we had an agreement that Golf and Dolphin Drive would be maintained in proportion to the amount of square footage of the building.
Okay, that makes sense.
His shopping center, uh, Magdaddy's, uh, Ribeyes, they're all assigned square footage values, and I'm asking if, when he sold you this property, did he let you understand that you and your square footage would be added into that formula?
I believe that he probably did, but I'm gonna be totally honest with all of you, I don't have a business mind, and that's why I'm at this meeting tonight, without Travis, like, I'm at home, he's at home with his family, and I'm trying to understand these things, but if you need me to find out, I have a relationship with David Swain and Jason Swain and Sam, and I will find it out for you, and I will figure it out to make it work however you want it to work. Um, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Whatever you need me to do, I will do it, that's all, that's all I can say.
The only thing I am asking is if you will agree to add the square footage of your building into the formula for the maintenance of the private road as the shopping center, Magdaddy's, Ribeyes, et cetera, agree to do.
Well, that makes sense to me, I mean, I'm not a business person, as long as everybody else does, I'm in, you know? I'm not that smart about business, all I know how to do is be better than our end, but, like, if that's what it takes to make this go, and that's what you want, I'm gonna make it work, that's what, what we do, that's how we roll, how we roll.
Good enough.
Good, Paxson?
Only other thing I want to ask is just confirmation, because it was very difficult for me to hear the, the run-through of the site plan.
Yeah, me too, I swear to God, I couldn't, but I already knew it, so I memorized it, but that's, like, you didn't have that, but I get it.
So, firm that the fire hydrant and the water meters will be on the east side of Golf and Dolphin Drive on the applicant's property.
Correct.
Is that, is that the case?
Correct, it's right there in, uh, right by, yeah.
Yes, I just want to confirm it, just want to confirm it, I have the plan before me.
If, if you walk the entrance and go up about, I don't know, 40 feet, it's got two water meters and the fire hydrant labeled. This is a pro- proposed six-by-six tuck-in sleeve, which I would recommend Albert Taylor do, if anybody's listening, for the fire hydrant. And then you've got a, uh, one for the island pets, and one is for doggy daycare. And while he's there, you might as well ask him to do that for you, too.
Those were my questions, and, uh, and, uh, I originally asked, I asked the Health Department approval marked in A, and then I saw the letter, so I understand from John Freshwater that those three items have been addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Fred, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, it's your turn.
I, I got two basic questions, why isn't it D K on CSP?
Okay.
What was the lawyer's ruling on the curbing?
Zach?
The lawyer ruled that the, uh, the curbing was not necessary along Golf and Dolphin Drive outside of the property, and that also sidewalks were not required.
But Fred, if, Fred, if you look at the CSP, they have curbing and gutter on the way around the parking lot, okay?
Well, I'll, I'll add that later, but I'll get to that.
Okay.
The second piece is, is kind of a basic question, because I've, we've never done this before at all. At two separate businesses on the same plot on the same CSP, and I'm not sure how you handle the two.
Well, I think what's happening, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, your building, the building, and they're running it from you, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct, okay, so technically, Michelle, with all the pro- structure and all the improvements on the building, and we'll lease them to Matt and Julie Henderson from Animal House in Jacksonville.
That is correct.
Are you with me, Fred?
Some of the, the two, almost as if you have two CSPs.
Fred, she's got both buildings on the one, she's gonna own them both. It's her property, why would she need a second CSP?
Yeah, that's it.
She's on the sidewalk.
Yeah, okay, and then let me just go to his address for other questions.
What?
I don't, I think the height and density of these things, the height of the building, everything, I couldn't find that.
Well, they haven't submitted their drawings yet, Fred.
I looked at the, just what we got, you know, the six feet and the other six feet, so I didn't, any say that's the height of the building, alright?
Okay, I'm gonna guess the maximum, Fred, it's gonna be about 38, 39 feet, which is way under the 50 feet that loads it.
Then that's fine, but, but they need to, uh, put the height of the building on plan.
Well, we haven't gotten the construction drawings yet, Fred, this is just to get the CSP approved, so that they can get their drawings and kind of get going.
John, I'm willing to do this with, with conditions to go forward.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is, Michelle, are you gonna have a, a big independent sign on the property?
Michelle? John?
Sorry, I'm muted, I'm muted, what is the question?
Are, you're gonna have a sign on the top of the...
You know, like reload down?
Well, of course I have to have a sign, I have that signage, it's just like, of course you can have a sign, what are you asking specifically?
I don't see any sign on the CSP, Fred.
I don't need it, that's why I asked the question.
Okay.
I believe the signing, the signing question for this is actually gonna be on the eve of the building, that's, it was gonna be incorporated into the actual structure.
Okay.
My building is going to have a sign on the structure of the building, that is correct, I have my plan is to put my logo and my sign on the building itself.
Okay.
Okay, I just don't have all the power, I wouldn't believe it would see that there. Because you're allowed one, one of the, my thing.
I didn't understand that.
Michelle, Fred's just letting you know if you needed one on the street, you'd be allowed one.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
He's saying if, if we needed a sign towards, at the road, we're allowed, or front road frontage, four signs.
Okay.
Based on where it's at.
Whatever you want.
Alright, what else, Fred?
Let's see. Okay, um, oh, it is really a question more for, it is from Michelle, but for, uh, the guys that are drawing this up.
John, Fred?
In places for us old folks to knock out, and that was, uh, oh, sometimes with these big trucks around that park, set out, it's tough.
John, Freshwater, that's for you, buddy.
What was the question, I'm, I'm...
Oh, one more time, Fred.
Yeah, I couldn't catch that at all.
Okay, if you say that there's 26 plus, uh, between parking spaces, is that really enough expensive and new of today that most of the people are driving these larger vehicles?
Six is more than enough.
Well, the, the best comparison I can give you is most municipalities I deal with have 24-foot aisles, and they have 18... And 22.
Yeah.
And most of them have 18-foot deep spaces, not 20-foot deep spaces. Um, and most spaces are nine feet versus 10, so we're 10 by 20, which is two foot longer, a foot wider, and then the aisle is two to four foot wider than typical. So it, it should be, um, comparatively at, more than adequate to what's being done in most towns I work in.
Okay, that's just information, fine. Now, the next one is, I have a leg down there, wrestle stuff, I don't think we have a stop sign posted to drive out on Golf and Dolphin, is that correct?
Yeah, it's right there, if you look at where the eight-inch trench train is, trench train goes across, it's right through to the right of the site plan, Fred. Up there in the front, says, uh, stop sign per M E T C O.
Alright, uh, last you called it, uh, right away improvements, okay. Oh, and it, this really kind of gives accident to it, too. That, remember the reload, remember we were all talking about getting the, the street, did reload get in, too? When does that come into play to have to pave that street, put it in?
I think Paxson asked that question earlier, Fred, when you were going to, uh, get your notes, and Michelle agreed to put her square footage into the mix for, uh, maintenance and upkeep, if I'm not mistaken, as to what I heard, Michelle or Paxson, is that accurate?
Michelle should answer that.
Yes, she, she agreed that we would pay our square footage based off of, into the calculation of the upkeep of the road.
Okay, so that was answered while you were going to get your stuff, Fred.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, what else you got?
Just along with Michelle, we started having the, the thing, things that road.
Okay.
Oh, let's see. Um, building, there's, there's, there's ancient, the property, not our detail, that's, that's, for that, but, they got, uh, Jason property noted, I didn't see where they had down.
Yeah, they got them, they got Carter Crossing B20, they got, uh, Cedar Creek B20, so yeah, it's, it's correctly marked, Fred.
Yes. Just, and then, let's see, um, all time, oh. When, oh, what? I know it says it's a, you know, but actually, what kind of steering device do you have on it?
Matt, Michelle, you doing Hardy, you doing Cedar, what are you doing?
Currently, it's listed for Hardy board and, uh, metal roofing.
Alright, thanks, Matt, do you hear that, Fred?
Yeah, I got that.
Hardy, Hardy and a metal roof. Hard, hardy and a metal roof.
Um. Gee. When I look at the curving around parking lot, alright? That is, we come, so notice about this, that what kind of curving is it between the, uh, parking lot and the, uh, stormwater collection path?
Okay, if you look, Fred, there's like a little bar that goes across each one of those parking spaces. And that's one of those concrete curves, which is noted over in the detail on, on the side.
Yes, but it is a concrete curb.
Yes, sir.
Like rest.
Yes.
Oh, alright.
No. The detail's gonna be this, Fred. You're gonna have the, the gutter, and then probably, correct me if I'm wrong, John Freshwater, about eighteen inches from that will be the bump, and it'll be one of those concrete, probably four to six inches high, kind of looks like a septic tank, only about six or eight foot long, nailed to the con, nailed to the tarvia. So if you, if you jump that, you're going in the pond.
Okay, that's, I just remembered what, um, oh, Dugga was doing, everyone, um, when he showed us, uh, the curve, and it was a flash, uh, of traffic signal.
Yeah.
And it was locked off.
No, 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 it's, it's similar to what, 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 what Rilo did on the downside of the parking lot near their se, their, their, uh, stormwater pond.
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
What else you got?
Uh. Okay, next thing, Michelle. I can't believe you all didn't, oh, I just have one suggestion to Michelle, though.
Okay, here comes Michelle.
But I noticed that, that the building faces the back end of the, uh, shopping center. And if you drive out into that, it's not a very attractive place. She may, maybe you should put some form of a buffer in, right down there by the, uh, uh, on the side of the stormwater path.
Gotcha.
That's just a comment. A private comment.
Okay. All right, so you good, Fred?
I'm good.
Okay. David, you good?
I'm good.
Kevin, you good?
Good.
Paxton, you good?
Sure.
Better yes?
Sure, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so I called for a motion to send the CSP as presented to the Board of Commissioners when they next meet, which may be May, unless, uh, Zach can get them to do a visual meeting like tonight.
Yeah, we might be doing one of those in May.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain the motion.
Motion.
Yes.
Okay, second? Is that you, Fred, second?
Yes.
All righty. Any further discussion?
None.
Okay. Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Okay, so it's, well, B L C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got.
Thank you so much.
Commercial strike.
Cool. Awesome. No.
All righty, everybody got your commercial, uh,
Say that again, John.
Conditional use permit?
Got it.
Still here, Fred? Okay. Zach?
Can we go ahead and start on this? All right, John, you want me to go ahead and get started?
Yep, let's go.
Okay. Here's the property information, property owner name, Third Eye Holdings LLC, property owner mailing address, seven nine zero four Sound Drive, Animal House, N C two eight five nine four.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Let us get together on this. What are you going through, Zach?
This is the conditional use permit application, and this would be for Animal House.
Right, hang on, hang on, one second.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's front and back. It took me a minute to get together too, Paxton, so.
Am I the only one having terrible difficulty hearing this stuff?
No, you, you're not loading podcast.
The, the, the static and.
All right. Is everybody, uh, on the conditional use permit now?
You there, Paxton? You good?
Are we starting with page two of sixteen?
Let's go, uh, with four of sixteen zoning information, and we'll run three, starting there.
Aye, and we just discard two at three of sixteen?
Well, I mean, that's just background information, that's email addresses. Um, we'll just get on to the details of it.
Thank you. All right, I'm with you.
Okay, so this is in the B twenty, commercial zoning district, the proposed use is a pet daycare and boarding facilities per town ordinances. Uh, the lot information, it's a hundred nine thousand three hundred thirteen square feet. The lot width is three hundred seventy-seven feet, the lot depth is three hundred twenty-five feet. The anticipated setbacks are forty foot from the front, zero on the sides, and twenty-five on the rear. The total square footage for the principal structure would be three thousand five hundred square feet. Uh, there's no proposed square footage for accessory structures. Uh, for parking and traffic control, parking spaces on site, eleven, uh, one of which would be handicapped and ten are standard. The parking space dimensions would be ten by twenty. Uh, the ingress and egress into the site would be on Golf and Dolphin Drive. Proposed signage, there would be a wall sign on the western, uh, the western side of the building facing Golf and Dolphin Drive. And the total sign area will not exceed, or shall not exceed, three square feet for each lineal foot of building wall facing, uh, to the west. Um, police impacts, uh, please describe, um, any special or unusual police protection requirements, and there's none known, uh, known by the applicant. Uh, stormwater, will this project require a state stormwater permit? What steps will be taken to control stormwater? A state stormwater permit is required. Runoff from the one-year, twenty-four-hour storm shall be collected from all impervious surfaces and infiltrated per the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Standards. Landscaping, describe all, all existing and proposed landscaping and buffering. Landscaping according to town's requirements. Uh, we do not feel buffering is needed unless required by town. The, describe all provisions to minimize effects to the environment and surrounding properties. Pets will be cared for and contained within the facility and facility's fence perimeter as required by the Department of Agriculture. We have been in operation in the city of Jacksonville for over twenty-five years without any negative effect, but only adding value to the surrounding properties and community. Please explain how establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Operations and maintenance, maintenance will be limited to the facility, its perimeters, without impacting the surrounding areas. Requirements by all state and local governing, or governments will be followed for construction, operations, and maintenance. Please explain how the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. And indicate our existing Jacksonville business is a similar commercial location, has never disrupted others. We will be located on a two-and-a-half acre commercial property adjacent to similar business. Uh, Animal House will offer needed services to the community and enhance the surrounding commercial properties. Our facility is deemed an essential business by the Department of Agriculture. Please explain how the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Indicate that their facility will only affect the property in which it will be located and its perimeters. Please explain how adequate roads, parking, drainage, and necessary facilities have been or will be provided through the project. Uh, twenty, twenty-six foot wide asphalt driveway in accordance with N C D O T standards, twenty-six foot wide parking aisle and number of parking spaces greater than the minimum required. Drainage and stormwater management shall be in accordance with state standards. Please explain what measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress in a manner that minimizes traffic congestion on public streets. Uh, and once again, twenty-six foot wide asphalt drive in accordance with N C D O T standards connecting to private Golf and Dolphin Drive with sixty-foot easement. Please verify slash explain that the conditional use shall conform in all other respects to all of the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The proposed use shall conform in all other aspects to the applicable regulations of the B twenty zone slash district. Please explain slash verify that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the recommendations and policy statements contained with the towns, within the town, uh, Camel Landies Plan. The proposed use is consistent with the Towns Camel Landies Plan, section four, dot two, dot two, policies seven and twelve. And this is the, if you're able to see the screen, they've got their authority for appointment of agent sheet, and those are just the subs- subsequent parts of the ordinance, so. Um, and this would be utilizing the same commercial site plan or same site plan, uh, as Island Pet Veterinary Hospital. So I'll scroll up to that if y'all need to take a look at that again.
Anybody got any questions?
Yes.
Oh, how did I know that was gonna happen? All right, Fred, what you got?
Okay, number one, type of, it's visual thing, that we just, all of us, uh, previous amendment, you know, to the vet, they, how are we even having to do this as a special use? Man, it's just right on him with the, so, right, so. He said in, that definition, it can cover the whole nine yards. So why are we doing this as a special use?
So veterinary uses, veterinary hospitals are considered a permitted use in Cape Carteret. However, the, uh, dog daycare and boarding is considered a conditional use or special use. So because they're two different use types, Island Pet goes through the CSP process, whereas the dog daycare has to go through the conditional use permit process. That's why there's two separate agenda items.
Hear that? Did you hear that, Fred?
I, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, it, it, when it said, uh, okay, that, are the people here from, from the Animal House?
Yep, Matt, Julie, uh, Henderson, you there?
Yes, we are. Hi, Mr. Josie.
How nice, and I don't actually have to set myself aside because I've been a customer of theirs for, what, over twenty years?
At least, yeah.
Okay, uh, well, I see my license, boarding and daycare. Are you all, you think contemplating, uh, groomies?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Super. As long as Patty comes over, yeah.
And she's intending on doing that, closer to her prime, yeah.
Freddie, you can't be soliciting business. Stop.
Uh.
All right. You got anything else, Fred?
Yeah, I said, you know, if they're going to the grooming, and maybe this will come up later, but, so the, uh, septic system and all that handle, all the hair that comes in with the grooming?
Yes. Mr. Freshwater and, uh, Matt and Julie got that under control, because it is a separate system.
It, it, according to the plan, it's not a separate system.
The, the system for the vet and for the, for Matt and Julie's Animal House is a separate system. And it's the design, their usage. So generally, there's certain hair filters and cleaners in the tanks, which will be shown on the plumbing plan. Is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um.
Excuse me.
Oh, that's my only question, and I'm, well, I'll be all the way over.
Fred, it can't be that easy. All righty. Okay. Um, any other further discussion or question? Now, forever hold your peace.
John, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I've been waiting for you.
Uh, Fred asked my question, and that was the conditional use. Now, is this gonna have to be renewed every year?
Act?
No, it stays, it, it stays in effect, and it's recorded with the property, uh, typically. It's recorded at the registered deeds office.
Good, because I don't want them to have to go through this every year.
Oh, think of the. Just kidding. All righty, I'll entertain a motion to approve this and send it out to the Board of Commissioners. Air motion.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
All righty. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I call for a vote on the motion. All in favor, send it to the Board of Commissioners. Say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so be it. It's on its way. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
We're excited.
We're excited to have you.
Great, thank you.
You too, Matt and Julie.
Thank you. We're excited on being here. Yeah.
Good. All right. Uh, okay, Zach?
All right, so we'll go on to, uh, yeah, I think, so that should satisfy those two items, if I can get to.
Me. Text amendment.
Okay, you're the one. I'm on that now, if y'all can see the screen. Um, for the folks from Island Pet and for Animal House, you're welcome to stay on, but I think that's the two, um, items for you guys today. So just wanted to, uh, it might get prolonged, uh, with these two additional items up, see y'all, if y'all wanna stay on the call or not. But just wanted to give y'all that, uh, that information. Um, to go on to, we did item C, which is a text amendment to amend the land usage section, appendix A, chart of dimensional requirements, and it would be to modify subsection N, which is height max, the height of any structure. And it currently reads, the height of any structure not requiring floodplain elevation. They'll be measured vertically from the top of the required tree board. be measured vertically from the top of the required freeboard elevation to the peak of the roof. And so this would be striking where it says not, because I think that was entered in there as a typo, because it's actually subsection N and subsection M are both, I think duplicated in how they read. So this is just for clarification purposes. This is, we've been interpreting it as the not being included in there. But this is just to clean that up. So it would read, the height of any structure requiring floodplain elevation shall be measured vertically from the top of the required freeboard elevation to the peak of the roof. And this text amendment is consistent with Section 4.2 of the 2007 Town of Cape Carteret Land use plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have about the proposed text amendment.
Anybody got any questions? Go ahead Fred.
I, Zach, I've got a real problem with this, because you're changing what I knew of as the original intent of doing this. Now, maybe we already said it wrong, but the object game was to keep Teddy House, well, let's see, first off, we recognize that people in the floodplain have certain requirements to deal with. But we were looking at it so you don't get Teddy House higher than wherever it was, you know, thirty or forty feet in the place. And the way this reason is, that if, the only people that are accepted are the people in the floodplain, that's the only thing that this applies to, is the way I read your, uh, statement.
That's right.
So the, so basically, if you're located in, in the floodplain and you're, let's say the requirement is an AE twelve, so, or AE ten, that's, that's like a common flood zone in town. So you got an AE ten. So you have to elevate ten feet plus the two feet of freeboard requirement. So you'd be required to elevate twelve feet. But your ground elevation might only, I mean, your ground elevation might be six feet above mean sea level. So your required freeboard at that point would be to six feet. So instead of having them measure from six feet above sea level, you're measuring six feet above that point to get to your twelve foot freeboard requirement. Basically, the, I guess the, the reason for measuring in that way would be to ensure that people are elevating their structures and not penalizing them for elevating to meet the floodplain requirements. Otherwise, it's kind of counterintuitive to penalize folks for elevating their homes to meet the floodplain regulations, if that makes sense.
Well, the problem is, can you hear me, Zach?
Yeah.
This is Paxton. The problem is, if you say, okay, disregard the elevation, and we're gonna measure from the first floor, first living level, and you can go up forty feet from that. Now, has this been run by the fire department? I don't think we have a ladder truck that'll reach that high, do we?
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, I mean, I think Western might, but.
I remember a while.
I think this needs for the fire department.
Well, I mean, basically, we've been building the forty foot from the freeboard for years. That's what we've been doing.
No, we haven't. We've been building from the, from the ground forty feet up, from the, from whatever the elevation is, and building forty feet up and no higher. And now we're saying, okay, we're gonna go up to the freeboard and build another forty feet. So you can have put pilings plus forty feet, and I'm worried about fire protection.
Well.
Typically, the only amount that it would increase would be whatever the required freeboard is. I mean, it would be like in the example I provided, if you've got a twelve foot requirement, which is the ten feet, which is the regulatory base flood elevation plus two feet of freeboard, if you are at six foot for the ground elevation, you're only going up an additional, it's only an additional six feet of change. I mean, in our most restrictive flood zones of the town, I think, might only be, I don't even know if we have a twelve. I mean, I can pull up the flood map, but you know, in terms of the impact.
We've got, we've got elevens in our neighborhood.
Okay, so I don't think, we don't, I don't think we have any higher than a, I can pull it up.
Yeah, but if I wanted to, if I was right down close to the water, and I had to go up, what, seventeen feet to meet the floodplain, and then I had forty feet on top of that, I got a, what, a fifty-seven foot house.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that's not how it's measured. That's not how that works. And when you, when you're determining what your requirement is, you subtract what the, the ground elevation is from it.
Well, that's true, but still, is there an emergency to, to rule on this, or can we run it by the fire department?
Yeah, we, we can run that by the fire department. Hold on, let's just, let's see. Trying to pull it up on the screen. So we've got AE eleven, DE twelve, um, DE twelve, yeah, I think DE twelve is our most.
Biggest, yeah.
Restrictive, yeah. And even at that, if you look at the average ground elevation on pretty much any of these waterfront parcels, it's probably at least six feet above sea level. I mean, you have to get a survey real book, for sure. But I mean, in most cases, that's what it would, uh, would be. So in terms of an impact, it's only about maybe six or eight feet tops for any of these given properties, because you subtract out the ground elevation. But we can definitely run it by the fire department if that would be helpful before we move forward on it.
That satisfy your, your question Paxton?
Yes, sir. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Alright, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to table this, so Zach can get with the fire chief to check fire safety on this. Clear, motion?
Here's motion.
Motion to table this, so Zach can check with the fire department.
Motion to table, so Zach can check with the fire department.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Don't say aye.
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 David, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Carrie, table. Okay. Zach, next.
Alright, so we'll move on to the flood damage prevention ordinance. Um, so this is something that we did send out back in March, but we didn't have a quorum at that meeting. Uh, but it was sent out back in, in the March agenda. The, uh, going through the document, there's very few areas within this document that we can modify. I'd even remove the reference in here to sand dunes, um, because I didn't feel that it was applicable to Cape Carteret. But the state came back with guidance and said that we had to leave the reference to sand dunes in this document, or FEMA would not accept it. So, um, trying to provide that as an example for how stringent it is, that if, we really can't take anything out of this or modify the, too much of this document. Um, I think the main areas that are of interest would be, let me see if I can find them and point those out. Um, and a lot of this is, in our current ordinance, so this is replacing it with the state's updated language. Wherever you see green or blue is where the state has made a change. And they're pretty rigid on those changes. Um, this was one area right here. It deals with a non-conversion agreement. And this is where you have a document from the property owner. What's that?
Trying to stay with you.
Page, page seven.
What page?
Uh, page seven.
Got it.
Okay, okay, I'm on, I'm, okay, they're down in the lower right-hand corner on their text, Kevin. They down in the right-hand corner.
Yeah, this would be.
Fred.
Um, so a non-conversion agreement is where you have a document that's basically recorded with the property and kept on file, um, by the local government that says any of the space below flood cannot be converted into living space. Um, you couldn't build a house and have a garage below flood, and then convert that garage over to any type of living space, or put any of the fixtures in there that might convert it over to living space. Um, what this requires is that the town goes around every year and inspects everybody's house that's in the floodplain that has a non-conversion agreement to confirm that they haven't converted it over. And then there's penalties or provisions that would be in place to require them to convert it back if it was discovered. And then we would also have to report those inspections of the non, you know, based on the non-conversion agreement, if they're in compliance or not. Um, the reason, this is an optional provision. We don't have to have that in there. Um, I would lean towards us not having that in there, because I think it would be, it could become a very cumbersome task to every year go through and try to schedule a time to go into people's homes and see if they've converted or not. Um, so I don't, if, if it's something that the state's not requiring us to do, um, I'm not advocating that we, that we take that step of requiring that on an annual basis. I think it would be, and I've seen it in other communities about how, how it goes, and it can be very confrontational between the homeowner and the town in terms of, we wanna come in and look what you've got there. And, you know, we need to come in on this date to see if you converted it or not. So, um, it would be my recommendation that we don't have that included in this, uh, ordinance, but, uh, open for discussion. Okay. So you can come down here. In the freeboard section, um, this is also significant. The state recommends four feet of freeboard, um, where currently we require two feet of freeboard. Uh, I would not, I think that's striking a balance somewhere between no freeboard, which in the unincorporated parts of Carteret County, there's no freeboard requirement. So it's a zero freeboard. And currently, we're at a two-foot freeboard requirement. The state recommends going to a four, which could help us on the community rating system to get more points. However, and John might be able to weigh in on this from a construction standpoint, uh, I mean, a four-foot freeboard would be pretty significant, so.
Yeah, that'd add a lot of money.
Yeah. So that might be overly burdensome to the property owners.
But, but force, force a lot. I would agree to take that, leaving it two.
Okay. Alright, this is one of the references there, where it talks about defining sand dunes and stuff like that. I had tried to remove some of the non-applicable sections, but, uh, we got the feedback that we need to leave that in place, because if it's not in there, FEMA won't approve it. Um, this talks about substantial damage determinations. Um, that reads, substantial damage means damage of any origin sustained by a structure during any one-year period whereby the cost of restoring the structure to it before damage condition would equal or exceed fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the damage occurred. It's got the definition of substantial improvement. That's another part in here. Um, and I think we're fine with leaving that section in there. There are different periods of time which can be used. Um, we left it at a one-year period. I think, you can see we're down here where it's crossed through.
Right.
It has some optional language. Um, a five or ten-year period recommended, so basically saying if you've had substantial damage in a five or ten-year period, um, this, this provision would kick in. I think that, I would lean towards going with the minimum, which is a one-year period. Um, you know, I, I don't know that we need to go to a five or ten-year. I think, one, that's a lot to keep up with to manage that. But two, I think that may be overly burdensome to the, the property owners. Um, because a ten-year timeframe is a significant period of time. And it's highly probable we could have, you know, two storms in a ten-year period that would kick this into effect of, uh, you know, requiring, if you had substantial, if you did a substantial improvement that exceeded fifty percent of the market value, that the structure would have to come into compliance with the current requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance. Um.
That's, that's code right now, Zach.
Yeah, so right now, it's on a, on a one-year period. I believe that's what's in our ordinance now. But this is saying, in a five or ten-year period, so, you know, take that timeframe of ten years and saying if there's two storms that come through and it exceeds that fifty percent of market value, essentially, it would kick this in, rather than, you know, a one-year period where if you had two storms in one year, that would kick this into effect. It's just a different level of how stringent we want it to be. The, point out a couple of other things. Talked about temperature control. This is one area they talk about, like, basically the area below flood. Um, if it's like the foyer area, it's referred to temperature control. It means having the temperature regulated by heating or cooling system built in our appliance. Um, one thing that added there. In this section, we're just updating to reflect the date. This, this section here is Article Four, Section A. It's just defining the staff member, town manager, are they designated for the purposes of this ordinance?
Does anybody got any questions going through this? Paxton, Fred, anybody?
None.
Okay.
Uh, this is a, this is a provision right here about some requirements. The, um, one of them is that the certification of the plot planned by a registered land surveyor or professional engineer. Um, that's one requirement that could be put in place. It's an optional requirement.
Put it in. Put it in.
No, 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 that should stay.
Put it in.
Okay.
Edit, right Paxton?
Yes, sir, edit.
Thank you.
Alright, so, uh, the, we make a note of that. Section B. Alright, we'll go through. Uh, so it'd be on page twelve.
Okay.
Um, an optional part in here is the V zone certification with accompanying plans and specifications verifying the engineered structure and any breakaway wall.
Edit.
And it's, this is in addition to, addition, or in addition, prior to the certificate of compliance slash occupancy issuance, a registered professional engineer, our architect shall certify the finished construction as compliant with the design, specifications, and plans for the VE construction. And I left this part in there, because I think it's kind of a good cover for us as the town, that, you know, we're not just unilaterally signing off as, you know, as the town inspector, it's actually being certified by an architect or professional engineer. That's why we left that part in there.
Answer that. Anybody else?
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Okay. Alrighty. Let's see, thirteen.
See, so on this page, we took out the reference to no- See, so on this page, we took out the reference to no alteration of sand dunes. This was one section that was optional that could be taken out. So we took that out. Um, one of the things we left in there that was optional was limitations of below base flood elevation enclosure uses, um, which I think it's good for them to define what those uses are below flood. Um. The statement is in the VE flood zone that there shall be no fill used for structural support. Um, I took this out because I know that some people do like to bring in some amount of fill for the property, but if we prohibit them bringing any fill, then they'll have to build on whatever elevation their property is. So.
They what?
Let them bring in fill.
Okay.
Structural fill.
What page is number is that?
Uh, this would be page 13 and 13 and then J.
Jay in the red, Paxton.
All right. And then a statement that all materials below base flood elevation must be flood resistant material. Um, and I left that in there. I think we want to encourage people to use flood resistant materials below flood.
That, that's standard building code right there, Mr. Oh, that just.
So this is the elevation certificate requirement. Um, and it's state recommended, but optional. Um, but I would like for each stage in this process that we get a copy of the elevation certificates, that we have one before construction, during construction, and upon completion of construction, um, essentially.
So this is asking for basically a certified first floor flood shot?
Yeah, it'd be once the.
That's something that we need. I mean, the island, you have to have a foundation survey before you continue to make sure your, your finished first floor is out of the floodplain.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Need that here.
That's what, uh, that's what it's talking about in subsection two, where it says when the reference level elevation, when it's, when it's within seven calendar days of the establishment of the reference level elevation. So yeah, I would, I would lean towards leaving that in there because I think that's helpful because you don't want somebody to get to the completion stage and then determine that they don't meet the flood requirement. So.
Exactly.
Well, that's happened before. Especially in this town. All righty.
Uh, floodproofing certificate, opted to leave that in there. I think that's important to have in there that, um, if there is any floodproofing that in non-residential floodproofing, that they are meeting the regulatory flood protection elevation requirements. Uh, and they have to provide us the floodproofing certificate with supporting data. Um, and I think that's important to leave in there as well. If there are any areas in town that are going to be required to, that are non-residential, that are going to be using any floodproofing measures. Um, so for the exemptions, this is one area that there's some flexibility. This is for certification exemptions, so they wouldn't be required to provide the certification um, in zones A, AE, AH, AO, and A99. Um, they're, these structures would be exempt from elevation slash floodproofing certification requirements specified in items A and B of the subsection. And we're on page 14, just for reference, towards the bottom of that page. Um, so it'd be recreational vehicles, temporary structures, and then the third one is where there's flexibility. Um, accessory structures that are 150 square feet or less and 150 is what is recommended by the state are less, are there less than $5,000 in value. Um, the state recommends 3,000. Um, but I, I know some of the sheds and all that are, are expenses that are put down here because of the wind requirements. So I figure going with 5,000 as a value there would be appropriate, but it could always go with the 3,000. Just up to discussion on that.
I would just say 150 square feet.
Yeah, I think we have to specify a dollar amount on there. Um. Yeah.
Then do it to 5,000.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to see 150 feet for 5,000.
Uh, V-zone certification, um, something we opted to leave in there. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance or occupancy, a registered professional engineer or architect shall certify the finished construction as compliant with the design specifications and plans for the VE zone construction. It's an optional, optional provision, but I opted to leave that in there.
I'm getting with that.
Yeah.
Nothing on 15.
Nothing on 15. So then we're going to be on 16 now. Um. Yeah. So this is an optional item that when the lowest floor and lowest adjacent grade of a structure are the lowest ground elevation of a parcel in a special flood hazard area is below, or is above base flood elevation, advise the property owner of the option to apply for a letter of a map amendment from FEMA. However, if the property is to be removed from the V-zone, it must be located seaward of the landward toe of the primary frontal dune. Maintain a copy of the Loma issued by FEMA in the floodplain development permit file. Um, I opted to take this out, but I don't know if anybody has an argument for leaving it there.
No. That's more of a beach thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Just get the.
There's nothing on, nothing optional on these pages. These are all just kind of filling the blanks for the community name.
Okay.
That information. Um.
What page are you jumping to?
Uh, so I'm on page.
Are we just?
Twenty.
Okay.
And this is where, yeah, because on those pages, it's just filling in the blanks with the applicable information.
Yeah. All right. So we just jumped to 20.
On the bottom, Kevin.
Say again?
Yes.
On the bottom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
Okay, got it, Brad?
Uh, I mean, Zach, why do you want to take out number?
Number 16. So this is what I was just talking about earlier about being able to bring fill in. This, this would prohibit fill in the special flood hazard area, including construction of buildings on fill. And so this is optional.
I'm on page 20.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Number eight, why did you mark through that blue line?
Oh, the, the state took that out. So if they took it out, yeah, we can't, they're just showing where the change was by striking it. Um, that's not something, if it's in red, that's an area that we've done something with, but if it's blue, then it's something the state has done. So that's, that's not something, uh, that we put in there.
Okay.
And I think it's replaced with, if you look at eight below it, I think they added to that provision. All right. So yeah, going down to 16, that's where it deals with being able to bring fill in, into a special flood hazard area. And I, I know that happens quite frequently in town and I don't, I don't think we want to change our stance on that by prohibiting that.
Okay.
All right. So go to page 21.
21.
Um, and this would be elevated building, section four, and it'd be subsection B. There's an optional provision here, uh, which, which says, uh, this is talking about the areas that are below an elevated, um, building. And one of the provisions in here shall not be temperature controlled or conditioned. Um, and I, I suggest leaving this in there so that people don't convert a garage that's below flood into a bedroom. Um, this is just a provision that we can lean back on and say that, um, you know, if, if somebody builds a new house and they have a garage that's below flood, they don't convert it into an apartment or a living space that's on the ground level that's below flood.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is another reference on page, uh, 22 to the, uh, the requirement for a non-conversion agreement. And so this is just reflective of what we talked about earlier with not having that in there, um, and not requiring a non-conversion agreement because you can see here where it's required to be recorded and everything else. So that's just removing those references.
Yeah, hung up on Fred.
Hey, did you hang up on Fred?
I might have.
Okay.
Brad, you there?
Yeah, I'm hearing you.
Okay. I thought I hung up on you. Sorry. Okay. We're on page 22 now?
Yeah, 22.
Okay.
And this is the section five, addition, addition slash improvement, A and one, the, they're saying this is optional. Um, additions and improvements to pre-firm structures, when the addition or improvements in combination with any interior modifications to the existing structure are, and then not a substantial improvement, the addition and our improvements must be designed to minimize flood damages and must not be any more non-conforming than the existing structure. And I think we want to leave that in place. I don't think we want on pre-firm structures to allow things that are more non-conforming than the pre-firm structure.
That's fine.
This is on page 23, just leaving it at the minimum that they prescribe of one year. One year, just filling in the blanks.
34.
34. An accessory structure with a footprint less than, and then it says to insert square footage. It recommends 150, and I put 150 in that. And then same thing for the.
5,000.
Off of the structure. Yeah, for 5,000, just like we did for the other flood zone.
All right. 25's clean, 26 looks clean.
28.
Yep. So on 27, it's just talking about, um, lattice or wood below flood and the amount that needs to be open. And specify at least 40% of the area of the lattice or screen needs to be open to allow for floodwaters to pass through.
Okay. So who's going to enforce all this?
What's that?
Who's going to enforce all this?
That's me.
She's checking. 28.
All right. So we're on 28. This is once again referencing the non-conversion agreement as we talked about earlier. So we take those sections out.
29.
So on 29, I'm suggesting we add in a provision, and this is kind of dealing with some of the stormwater issues we've seen in town. Um, so I'm suggesting we add in, non-structural fill shall not be placed in a manner that diverts rainfall slash runoff. Our floodwaters onto adjacent properties are on to the right of way of the town of Cape Carteret. Innovative stormwater control and retention methods shall be utilized to retain runoff on site. It's something we see when there is fill that's brought in and then the lots are graded. So it either goes on their neighbor or into the road. Um, this would require them to come up with a solution to retain it.
For it. Should also have something about a stormwater plan. Part of their, uh, application like Townhamer Isle has.
Yeah. So that might be something in the future is that we do a stormwater plan for the town.
Zach, I'm just saying, I, I wouldn't mind getting some stormwater control.
Yeah, I've got my certification to do that. We would just need to put a stormwater, uh, management plan in place for the town, which is a whole other.
Anybody against the provision? Paxton?
I, I have to switch back and forth. Can you hear me? This is a really staticky line, but I am very much in favor of that addition.
Okay. Brad?
All right.
David.
Sounds good to me.
Good. Kevin?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So jumping to page 31, that's the next spot where there's some optional items. Um, the, uh, reference in subsection eight that's continuing from the page before, talking about fill being prohibited in the special flood hazard area, just striking that out. Um, this is, this next section, section one, standards for shallow flooding zones, which are zone AO, um, just putting a two-foot requirement in place if there's no depth that's specified. I don't think we have any AOs. We do have AEs, but we don't have AOs in town currently. But just get that, we ever get them, they'd be two feet.
Hopefully we never will, Zach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, and then.
Zach, before we leave that. Uh, number eight, you say we're leaving that out? I thought we should allow fill brought in.
Yes. So this, this would allow fill to come in. If we left this provision in there, number eight, it would be saying that it's prohibited to be brought in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I got you. Thank you.
And then that should be everything. Uh, we were originally trying to get this adopted by April 13th, but with the, that meeting being canceled, we'll amend that to the May date, whenever that ends up being. So, uh, it's May, May 11th. So, but that's everything in the proposed flood damage prevention ordinance.
Anybody got any questions?
Nope.
None.
All righty. I'll call for a motion to send the, uh, flood damage prevention ordinance to the town for their approval. Do I hear such a motion?
Motion is sent.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Kevin, thank you. Any further discussion? If there are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pos, nay? Carries. All righty. Business, Zach?
Fairly enough.
Old business?
Uh, no, old business. Um, and then, uh.
Anybody sign up for public comment? Heather?
Yes, I have five people signed up.
Okay, who's number one?
I'm joking.
Oh, you funny girl.
My son would like to talk.
Not tonight. All righty. Uh, since nobody, Zach? Mark?
Yep. For the town manager's corner, I don't have too much to, to share this evening. Um, give you a brief update on the coronavirus, COVID-19. Um, we're currently looking at putting some additional provisions in place, um, in the town. Uh, we've asked. Uh, we've asked the county to take some actions to limit travel into the county from people who do not own property within the county. Um, however, I don't know that they're going to act on that, that request. So I believe in this next week, we'll be putting some provisions in place in advance of this weekend to try to limit some of the travel into Cape Carteret from folks who do not own property within Carteret County. Uh, so that is something that we're, we're currently looking at. Um, as of, I believe, four o'clock PM, there was nineteen, uh, confirmed cases in Carteret County. Um, and there were two fatalities, uh, one of which, um, was an out-of-state resident and the other of which was a, uh, county resident who had passed away. Um, let's see, and I believe there-
The side on the beach?
What's that?
Is it counting the one with that on the beach?
Um, I don't know if that's, uh, it could be the same one, I'm not sure. They won't, they don't tell us, uh, anything about where these cases are located or any identified information, uh, because of the HIPAA law.
I hear you, okay. So when are you gonna, when are you gonna put that out, Zach?
About the, uh,
Restrictions.
Uh, we anticipate probably on Thursday, we're giving the county a, tomorrow to hopefully take some action. But if they don't, then I think we're gonna take action for ourselves. All the towns have requested the county to take action. Um, but I believe if, if they don't, that we'll take action ourselves to put some additional stipulations in place. Um, and, uh, looking at some things for the businesses, uh, you know, to still allow them to operate, but looking at some things to restrict, um, nighttime activities after nine PM. Uh, we won't be doing any checkpoints, um, at the present time, we're not anticipating doing that. Uh, and traffic would be allowed to flow freely on highway twenty-four and fifty-eight. We just don't have the resources to be able to, to do anything with that. Um, but there are some additional provisions we'll be putting on, in place to really try to strengthen the governor's, um, executive order and make sure people are abiding by the social distancing requirement. So that's something we'll be, I think, rolling out towards the end of the week. And, uh, you know, just something we continue to monitor. Um, and I believe right now, totals for the county, I believe there's forty-six pending cases that haven't been tested yet. There's a backlog in the testing, um, either at LabCorp or the state, the state labs. So, um, but they're not testing as many people as they were when this first started. They're only testing the most critically, um, sick individuals. And, uh, and so that's kind of a change. Um, so it's a little bit difficult to track how this thing is progressing in terms of, you know, some other places are doing drive-through testing and stuff like that. Uh, within our county, it's just the individuals who are presenting, you know, with the most significant symptoms that are getting tested. Um, so I'll, uh, we'll be continuing to post updates as we get them on the town Facebook and through other platforms. But, um, if there's any questions about that or anything else going on in the town, we're happy to answer them. The, um, I, we had a litter pickup that we were gonna do later in April, I believe. We'll probably be rescheduling that, um, to a later date. And our next board commissioners meeting will probably be over this platform. Um, and so that's sort of what we're looking at at the present time. But, uh, be happy to answer any questions y'all have for me.
Yeah, I, actually, I had cut out and had to log back in, so I missed the very beginning of your presentation or your talk on that. Was there any new items that are coming at the end of this week? You started to talk about that, what the county was doing or what the wishes of the towns were that the county would do more. But then my, my signal cut out, so I had to log back on. Did you state anything that the town of Cape Carteret is gonna be doing?
Yeah, so we're looking at a couple of different measures. We're looking at, um, potentially putting a curfew into effect from nine PM to five AM. Anybody who's traveling for an essential purpose that's defined in the governor's order, uh, would be able to travel for that purpose. So if somebody's a healthcare worker and they're coming home late at, at night, obviously, they can still travel to and from their residence. Um, our goal really is to try to address, uh, some of the folks who are coming in, um, you know, from out, from either out-of-state or from out-of-county, that are traveling in and bringing, and bringing in a lot of their extended family members. Um, so we're gonna allow property owners to still come in, um, if you own property in Carteret County. However, we're gonna try to limit it at that and not have extended family, um, coming in and bringing, you know, additional, uh, cases into the county. Uh, with the limited capacity of the healthcare system of the county, we feel it's important to, uh, to do everything we can to not flood the, uh, the hospital here. It's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-
Prudent, but what is limiting nine PM to?
I hate to say it, but we've got so many people here that are in the second homes. I, I personally, I've had a few words with a few people up doing that.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous on the island right now. And other municipalities are actually, Top Sale, I believe, is one of them. The police were going to the doors inquiring if they live there, they're renting. If they're renting, they gave them twenty-four hours to leave.
Yeah.
Apparently, we are unable to do that for whatever reason, but, you know, it, it needs to be taken seriously. I really don't see what restricting or imposing a nine PM restriction is gonna have any impact whatsoever. But something, I agree with you, something needs to be done because it's, again, us, us imposing a restriction, I'm not against it by any means, but I'm just saying it doesn't-
That thing, people are coming here, Kevin, to get away from their problems in the city.
Oh, I know that.
Before they infected, they're basically screwing our town.
Well, hell, yeah, they are. And, and I mean, look, we had to cancel all of our reservations. I don't, can't even discuss with you what a financial hit we've took in, but we've taken, but we were glad to do that for that reason, because we don't want them in our pharmacy, we don't want them in our grocery stores, we don't want them in our hardware stores.
I know, I know, I'm right there with you.
Yeah, but I don't really see what Cape Carteret imposing a curfew is gonna do in any stretch of the imagination to quell that.
Well,
Yeah, so the cabinet, uh-
Volunteering first, people riding through town that shouldn't be riding through town.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be a multifaceted approach, it's not just limited to the curfew. We're also planning to put some regulations in for the businesses to limit their capacity to fifty percent of the number of people that are listed on their maximum occupancy placards for that, for that business. Like Lowe's? Try to, yeah, to try to encourage some social distancing within those, within those, uh, businesses. Um, so that's another measure we'll be taking.
I don't see any different traffic now than what it was, uh, two months ago.
Oh, my gosh, but I don't see any traffic on the street, but Lowe's.
Go to Lowe's on the weekend, it's like, it's, it's crazy.
It's insane. I'm
It's nuts.
From the store all the way to highway twenty-four, it's full all day long.
Yeah.
Uh, but, you know, the whole, well, this isn't really a relevant conversation, but, you know, we can social distance and we can limit our restaurants and we can limit our meetings, but when you pile a thousand people an hour into a Walmart or a thousand people an hour into Lowe's, it doesn't even matter.
Hey, Zach, I think you have to put on press release tomorrow so that you give the businesses in town an idea that it's coming, so it's not
Yeah, I just-
You know, blind, get blindsided.
Yeah, I'm just sharing it with this group, y'all are in the loop, but we, I have to, I have to, I have to type up all the, and I have to research how to, how we can legally word it.
You know, I'm just throwing it out there to, uh, CYA, our, our town, if you know what I mean.
Uh, it might be nice to put a call to each of the, we don't have that many businesses.
Yeah, as soon as we have it available to go out, it'll definitely go out. Um, I can assure you of that, as soon as it's ready to be put out, it'll be put out.
Yeah, I think if you, uh, were to pre-announce before the announcement to some of our bigger customers, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we are in communication with the bigger, uh, with some of the bigger, uh, businesses in town, so.
All right, Cape Carteret isn't the problem, Emerald Isle is, what is that?
Paxton? You got your daddy's, uh, drag line, just lay it right there at the intersection, nobody will get through.
There you go.
So many people in Emerald Isle, it's terrible. And there's nothing that they can do, apparently, or they're not doing enough if they can, but they're using our-
Or they're unwilling to do anything.
Well, I agree with you.
Because nice matters.
Let's not get into that, okay?
I know, but it's affecting us in the, in the context of them using Lowe's, Lowe's Foods, Lowe's Home Improvement, Walgreens.
It's affecting all of us, Kevin.
It is, and I don't know that we as a town can put any pressure on that and the commissioners over in, in Relil, but just, I don't know.
That's where it needs to be.
Anyway, all right, Zach, anything else?
Uh, that's, that's everything. Like I said, we'll get it out as soon as we have it put together and formulated in a legally acceptable manner. But yeah, the, uh, we're doing everything we can on our end of the town. Uh, we've requested, all the towns have requested the county to take action. Um, but we'll just have to see. Um, aside from that, though, we are planning to put those provisions in place in Cape Carteret to try to do everything we can on our end to stay ahead of this. Um, you know, we've, uh, it, it's definitely an unprecedented time and unprecedented situation that, uh, we haven't, we haven't faced before. Um, so it's new to all of us, but, you know, we're doing everything we can on the town side to try to, to try to do things to, to prevent that travel from outside areas and bringing additional people in. I think if nothing else for making sure that the healthcare system's not overrun with, uh, with cases.
All righty, info sharing, anybody got any?
One item. One item.
Go ahead.
I took a package to the town hall yesterday that was mailed to me. And as Zach can hit or scan it and email it, I'd like for the planning board members and staff and any appropriate personnel that Zach thinks should be aware of it, I'd like them to be aware of it.
Is something you can do for Paxton, Zach?
Potentially, I, I haven't looked through that, that packet at this time, but I can take a look at it.
All righty. David, any, uh, info?
No, nothing, uh, actually, kind of interesting tonight, so thank you.
Say again?
Actually, pretty interesting tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you for attending. Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Good, Brad?
Yeah. Dude, my comment really is, this teleconference system that we got is such a mess. Is there something Zach can find that's better? Because earlier today, I had a tablet working audio and video, and tonight it only works audio on this system. I just, and then the telephone partly works and then doesn't work.
Yeah, I can barely hear Fred.
Hey, we're working on it, Fred, this is our first time, we're, we'll, we'll do better next time.
Well,
So we're gonna be experts at this one day.
One trial run, just, uh, or two before the meeting.
All right, we can do that, Fred. Hear that, Zach?
Yep, I heard that.
Okay, all righty. Uh, anybody else got anything? Just keep Dennis Cox in your prayers.
Right.
Um, everybody have a happy Easter. Know that, uh, Easter's the Lord's day that he rose and paid for our sins, so happy Easter, everybody.
Happy Easter, God.
Never bring it hot all year.
Yeah, well, no, that's your job, Fred. All right, motion to, to, uh, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All righty, any further discussion?
Nope, thank you for the time. And then Zach, you know, you've had a hurricane and now you have this mysterious virus to deal with. So I think that you have been well tried in your, uh, short tenure here. Cape Carteret.
Don't try to get better, Kevin.
All righty, uh, all in favor of adjourned, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So adjourned. Have a good evening, happy Easter, everybody.
Good evening, happy Easter.
Thanks, good job.
Everybody say aye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thanks, Heather.
You're welcome.
Let's see, how do I sign off this thing?